Welcome to Ridgewood Talks. Through this podcast, we will be introducing you to some of the leaders and legends in our village. We'll keep you updated about fascinating local events and we'll dig into the town's hot topics and so much more. But first, let me introduce myself. I'm Jeannie Johnson, the founder of Ridgewood Talks and Ridgewood Walks. The goal of these initiatives is to create a kinder, more connected, and more vibrant community. I'm thrilled to be co-hosting this podcast with my good friend and all-around wonderful guy, Jordan Kaufman. We look forward to meeting with you weekly and hearing your thoughts on who and what you'd like to learn about in our beautiful hometown. Enjoy this episode. Good morning, Jordan Kaufman. How are things in Ridgewood, New Jersey?
Things are good. We are wrapping up our interviews today, Jeannie, for the Board of Ed candidates. An exciting opportunity for us to talk to all the candidates, learn a little bit more about some of their ideas and experience. And we hope our listeners have really benefited from these conversations and we hope that they're going to make it to some of the other forums that are being planned. So yeah, this is an exciting time.
It is. I've really learned a lot from the candidates and I hope our listeners have too. So I think I'll just jump right in and introduce who we have with us today. But before I do that, let me just again, thank everyone for tuning in and then remind our listeners that there's a Board of Education election on Tuesday, November the 7th. There are two board seats open, each with a three-year term, and seven community members have stepped up to compete for these seats. We're so delighted because again, today is our last interview in this series and so we're so happy that everyone took time to speak to us. Through the course of these interviews, listeners will and have learned more about the candidates and where each one stands on the issues that affect our schools. And just to remind everyone that we asked voters to submit questions to our Ridgewood Talks email address. And so we're going to just discuss those questions and we'll expound on a couple of other things too. We want to remind listeners to attend the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum on October 18th. That's from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at the Ed Center on Cottage Place. And we encourage everyone to get there early because seats fill up fast. And we also want to ask people who attend to please submit questions to the candidates because that's really one of the best ways that you get to know them and hear their voice from a question that you asked of them. So right now I want to introduce our two candidates. It's Malcolm Jennings and Claude Ginchard. Claude has been a resident of Ridgewood since 2020. So welcome to town. It's nice to have you here. He's been married to his wife for 39 years. They have three grown children and two grandchildren. As I said, they moved to Ridgewood in 2020 from Tuxedo Park, New York. And Claude served on the planning board and the park advisory committee, which gave him experience in municipal budgets and other financial matters. He also works in the commodities and financial industry. He holds interdisciplinary BS from California Lutheran University and an MBA from the Thunderbird School of International Management. And what's interesting is he attended the American School Foundation in Mexico City and is bilingual in Spanish and English. His mother is Mexican and his father is Swiss. I have another friend with that composition. So it's fun to meet you. I also just want to say that Claude is a member of Our Lady of Mount Carmel Church and is active in the Upper Ridgewood Tennis Club. And Jordan, he's played tennis with you a couple of times, I think. Then on this same ticket is Malcolm Jennings. Malcolm has been a resident of Ridgewood for 24 years. He and his wife have three adult children who are products of the Ridgewood School District. Malcolm works in biopharma as a corporate trainer and is a member of and volunteers for Tabernacle at Harvest Church in Patterson, New Jersey. So welcome, gentlemen. We're so happy to have you here.
Thank you.
Jeannie, I wanted to point out one thing, just so you know, when you mentioned voting happens on November 7th, but you can vote by mail right now. And you can also vote early from the 28th of October all the way to the 5th of November.
That's a great reminder. Thank you.
Voting, voting already started. So you can.
Okay, great. That's no problem. That's good information to have. And you know what? I'm going to just put this caveat in there because I'm a traveling gal. I have not been getting my mail. So I don't know. I'm not, I haven't been reminded of these things, which I should have known. So I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. So gentlemen, I just want to clear up a couple of things. A lot of people are curious about you running on the same ticket. So I want you to explain that to us. And then there was a newspaper article recently that said that you were running under the umbrella of Moms for Liberty. So I just want you to clear up that.
Sure. You want to, you want to take that, Malcolm?
Yeah. What basically occurred with me, I was asked to run based on my opinions for parental rights within the state of New Jersey and what, what the parental rights are within the school system and what's coming forth in the school system. How unfortunately for some families or parents where teachers and administrators are able to talk to underage youth concerning the narratives of gender type, and they're allowed to keep that between themselves without notifying the parent. So I took it upon myself to say yes, to run for BOE in Ridgewood and to ensure that families, parents, single parents are able to have that right to find out, did you speak to my child concerning gender or sex change? Or whatever the curriculums that are being taught in a lot of schools today. Unfortunately, I don't know if those type of curriculums, I would say, are being spoken or taught within the school system. Or is it conversational amongst the children from younger age up to high school? I'm not certain if that has, has occurred. I really haven't heard anything, but I know it's becoming more prevalent within New Jersey and of course, the tri-state area here. So I decided to throw in, throw myself in on this ticket with Mr. Ginchard and to move forward with that as well. And we have a common goal as well is to increase the reading scores and math scores among students. We're a pro-student all the way, pro-family and pro-village of Ridgewood by far, you know, bar none. And that's why we decided to come in on this ticket here. And also for myself personally, I believe new leadership needs to be in the Board of Education as well. Leadership that is noted to be a service to the school districts and families in the community as opposed to just trying being on the board and have a strong fist, you know what I mean? To make decisions on certain things, but to make sure that the school board meetings are extremely transparent, encouraging families, whether you have children in the system or not, to come to the school board meetings and to let them know we are here to service the community and make sound decisions within the school district.
Claude, do you want to add anything to that?
Sure. Yeah, I'm just going to mention a couple of things that you said for, we are bracketed. The reason why we're bracketed too is that we, we solicited all of our signatures at the same time under the same form. And so we are bracketed on the ballot on column two, and we're the only ones that are bracketed. And, and we're bracketed under this moniker that says Parental Rights Alliance or Parents Rights Alliance, something like that. It doesn't say anything about Moms for Liberty, just so you know. But just to mention what you said about Moms for Liberty, we've gotten to know the New Jersey chapter of Moms for Liberty. I guess actually probably the Bergen County chapter, sorry. And they're actually wonderful people who also have very much in mind this whole parental rights issue, which is really this notification, the right word is notification, notification of the parents by this school for certain things. And there's, there is a, let me just say this, my wife is running for Bergen County Commissioner right now. And I've been all over the Bergen County with her and I have yet to hear anyone that isn't talking about parental rights. Just so you know, it's not just something that's just the two of us or something that's, something that we've heard in Ridgewood. This is across the, across the state, across the county, across the state and across the United States. It's a very big issue. But I know that this particular election is like all elections in New Jersey, nonpartisan, and we are very focused on that. And so we're just specifying the specific issue, which is parental rights, the specific issue of notification. And some people will say that that's anti-LGBTQ. I'm completely the opposite of that and I know Malcolm is as well. We are, we are extreme, let me say this, my children can be anything they want to be. My grandchildren can be anything they want to be. And we are 1 million percent supportive of our children in any decision that they make. The only thing that we really want for our kids is that if we have them in school, we want the teachers to be teachers and we are super pro-teachers. I have the most wonderful teachers in my life and I really love my teachers. But I also want to be there, the parent. I want the parents to be the parents. I don't want the teachers to be the parents. And so, so that's the reason why we like to have parental notification. And that's just stating how it is. It's not, not trying to be anti-any type of gender or any type of group. That is just what we want. That's just that parental notification and that's really it.
So is it?
I can get into a lot of the details now about the actual Board of Education and all the things that we're, we would like to do. We'd love to do that.
Sure. I just want to touch on this a little bit further, just because I want to clarify for myself and our listeners. You know, when it comes to this parental notification, is it just about these gender conversations? And that's solely what you're saying is that parents need to be?
In the state of New Jersey specifically, in the state of New Jersey, they've passed laws. So the only way that you can change this now is by, you can vote for us, but that doesn't change the law. The only way that you can change the laws is by changing the makeup of your state legislature in order to make those changes. If you want those laws to be changed, right? But right now there is a law currently that says that, that the school has the right not to notify you as a parent if your child wants to communicate to the school that they are not of the gender that your parents think you are.
Is, is part of that reason, is part of that law a civil rights issue for these underage students? Because from what, what the research that I've done on this, it indicates that a lot of these children have suicidal ideation when they're found in these, when, when they recognize that they're in this situation. And, and a lot of times from what I'm reading, that suicidal tendencies come from a rejection from their family members. So is that the reason why these students are encouraged to reach out to other adults, such as their teachers, for support and comfort and, and acceptance because they're not getting that in, in the home? So I, you know, I just want to have you help us understand.
Of course, yeah.
Why you feel it's so important for these children to make sure that their parents know their quote unquote secrets?
Well, the, the anti, there is a, the reason why these laws were passed, they're, they're considered anti-discrimination laws. And, and so yes, some, some view protecting the LGBTQ or especially specifically in this exact, specific example, the gender, gender, you know, transgender, they, that is the one issue that is, that is, that has been brought. And that's the one that's being brought up in some of these lawsuits by other school districts and things like that. That's a specific issue. But yes, that is, that is what, that is what, that's what the, the two sides of the equation are. One is saying that yes, you, this is meant to protect that transgender student. And the other side of the equation is, is, is parents' involvement is very, very important. And so we're on the parents are a very, very important involvement side. We think that parents' involvement is better, not worse. And so, so yes, and I agree, each, there's a very, a lot of different situations with respect to each child that may be transgender or tending towards transgender. But my, my belief, I believe our, our belief as Malcolm and myself is that parents' involvement is perhaps more important.
So what, one, one of the things, because I think this is a, this is an issue which is also kind of, you know, taking a little bit of a national basis as well as far as the discussion. And I'm sure that voters are already have kind of probably created some opinions on these matters. So I think, you know, that, that's something that, let us, let the debates and further conversations kind of expunge and create that conversation. Because one of the things that we don't want to do is kind of meld national with local issues that we've got to also address. So let's, let's kind of shift a little bit because one of the things that we've talked each candidate about is something that we've been dealing with locally, which is some of the turnover which we've had in both the superintendent and also some administrative levels, you know, whether or not that's an area of concern, where the focus is there. We've heard a lot of different opinions. What are your guys' thoughts about some of the turnover we've seen there? And also if you could, if you can talk about how you guys see the role of, of the Board of Education and how it interacts with these different parts of the system?
Well, first of all, just after reading carefully what the Board of Education, let's say, rules are for us as members. And I know there's actually a class today that we could potentially attend. But I think it's in general for all various Board of Education candidates around, around, I guess. We are, our job is not to run the school, but to, to make sure that the school runs well. That's the, that's the job of the BOE. So, so I will say this, I think that what, what Malcolm said before is complete and total transparency is what we, we are offering as part of what we would do. We think that, I know that I've heard the same things. I've heard that there's been a lot of changes. Yeah. So we've actually had the opportunity to speak with, you know, have, have pretty long conversations with two of the existing board members and hear sort of what's happened, the ones that are not up for reelection. We know that for sure they've gone through a very extensive and excellent process of finding a new superintendent. And I know that it's taken some time to get to this point and there's been a lot of turnover on the board. I know one thing, so many things have been different during COVID and this board has been around, you know, since those times. And there's been a lot of change since those times. Those times, it's been a very interesting time. So do I want to try to give everyone a pass because of COVID? Not necessarily, but I also do think that there are very special circumstances surrounding COVID. I do think net-net, we should be transparent. We should hold the board accountable for any types of personnel changes. We should always be, let me say this, there's, one of the things that I've also read about what our job is. Our job isn't to actually get into the administration itself. We can't necessarily go in and do what the job of the superintendent. The superintendent is the person we communicate with. So we are like the community, us superintendent. It's not like the community, us superintendent and the rest of the administrator and staff. We can't, we can't go into that area. That's not us. We have to make the decision. We have to endorse or not endorse the decisions, vote for or not vote for the decisions that the superintendent made. But we can't go in there ourselves and do what he does. So, so I would just say total transparency, showing what we can do, what, what, we will be that way with the community. We will public, we also have talked about this. We also want to track our progress as a BOE in all matters. We want to, we want to show with data, we're very data-focused. I'm very data-focused in my job and focusing on data and really understanding where we stand relative to other schools in New Jersey, where we stand relative to other schools in the United States and where we stand in other schools relative to Bergen County. And especially our even big competitor school, which of course is the Bergen County Academies, right? Which are, which have been, been pretty, they've been pulling a lot of people, great people to the Bergen County Academy as well. So that's, that's my point on that. But go ahead, Malcolm.
Yeah. The Board of Ed, as Claude alluded to, is to support the actions or function of the superintendent. Yes, we come up, I should say, the board comes up with their agendas and their set goals. And hopefully those agendas and goals are very, how can I say, fiscal monetarily. And they're not going to override the budget at all, but to ensure that those goals that we have are doable and sustainable for the long run. And just to put, give that support to the superintendent, the one that we currently have from what I've read and heard. He seems to be a very stellar superintendent, seems to be a man with, as I like to always say every once in a while, when you find a person like that with some wisdom, knowledge and understanding. So he seems to be very, very good at that. Seeing him at work as far as watching the BOE online when they're in session. He seems to be a very intellectual and common sense superintendent. And he seems as though he really cares for the school district, which is great. So with the Board of E, with Claude and I on there, we can bring forth even more support to the superintendent. We can even be able to come up with these goals and objectives that will facilitate the school district to be run in a very efficient way. And hopefully a low-cost budget as well. Getting things done under budget or within the budget would be absolutely great. So we just want to bring in some, some new mindset, some new ears, some transparency and trust. And to come in as leaders, leaders that are effective, leaders that serve the public, which is the main goal. And to ensure that every student's going to have great success or greater success than they had their former years within the school system. No matter what grade they're in, from kindergarten up to graduating, high school, leading the way into university or colleges or junior colleges, or even a, even a different job, if they want to go into being a car mechanic, you know, different trades that they may have. We want to be able to support all that. And I want to be able to, Claude and I, to bring in those type of policies or choices. You know, everything is a tradition of, tradition of excellence within Ridgewood High School. I almost said high school, but that's the education all the way across the board. However, as you know, some of the grades have dropped in math and reading and we want to be able to get those scores back up. You know, a lot of our counterparts who are running, truthfully, they have some awesome stellar backgrounds. And, and that's all well and good. However, you need people on the board that are leaders who have knowledge and wisdom and understanding and can conceive forth what's coming, see what's coming before it happens, you know, stay alert, not just with school board duties, but be alert what's going on within the state, side of the state concerning schools and school boards, what's happening with the NJEA and be able to make these decisions before things happen. So we need people like Claude and I, who have that insight, can see these things coming and be able to make these goals, set them, get them all, all the checks and balances, everything all in a row so that we can move on and make this school district back to be a tradition of excellence.
So just so we can kind of clarify, so in, in the way you guys answered about the role of the BOE, which I think, you know, obviously the kind of handing down the management to those who actually implement. Have you guys had a chance to meet with Mark Schwartz yet, our, our new superintendent?
Not yet, not yet.
Not yet.
We would like to, we'd like to. We probably will.
I have a question. Both of you bring up the transparency piece. And so I'd like to know if there is an example that you want to share with us about the lack of transparency at the Board of Education?
I can just say that what I've heard from some is that there were times when there were announcements that were made and people didn't even know that they were going to have, you know, with respect to administrators or people. It's just, it's just sort of very, very, it may have just been because they were, let's say, very, very quick to occur, but.
Can you give me examples?
I can't, I can't tell you from personal experience because I wasn't watching the board like a lot of people are. Like a lot of the people that were competing for in this position have definitely been, let's say, watching the board or being part of the board, what the board is doing, or in some way like the HSAs or Federated or whatever they're doing. They definitely are involved a lot more than us. I just got here three years ago, right? So I'm, I'm new, new to this, to this thing. But what, what I would say is this, is that I could just tell you what I have been normally in my life, right? What I do every day is I structure, you know, very complex transactions and I bring them down to very simple things that people can understand because I have to go through CEOs and CFOs and boards and a lot of constituents, a lot of stakeholders. That's what I do for a living every day. And, and that same thing that I do in my job, I will be doing here, right? I will be using my skills in, in the financial structuring world and hopefully basically taking those budgets and really understanding what they are. But I, the reason only I say budget, because at the end of the day, if you're going to, for example, there was a question in one of the things that I was on for the REA, it asked about the Diversity Equity and Inclusion DEI. And they said, we want to put another person, should we have a separate person in that role or should we, what else should we do? I said, well, right now the, the board is wrestling with, you have inflation going up, you have a, right now you have a 2% tax cap, right? And then you have inflation, which is much greater than 2% in a lot of different places. And how do you wrestle with all those things? How you create it? You have to do trade-offs. And then now also, let's say hiring a new person, which is, you know, going to be an expensive item, you know, in a budget. Everything is money at the end of the day. How you allocate money to what things is very, very important. And also is there any creativity around the budget? I said this yesterday in, at the high school, I said that, you know, we in Ridgewood, sorry, not in Ridgewood, but in Bergen County. Bergen County contributes 30% of the taxes to the state, but it only gets back less than 2% in state funding. So we are, we are, we just really are left to our own to do everything that we do here. It's all up to us with our community, our district, to come up with the best plan to make our schools the best possible schools they are, right? It's not like we're getting a lot of help from outside, right? So that's, to me, that's why you have to be creative and come up with the best, let's say, the best solutions within that, within that budget that you have. And so that's.
And so from, from my understanding is we have a surplus right now. Is that true? Do you know about that?
I have to, I'd have to look very carefully at the budget. Let me say that, that most entities, villages, you know, townships, schools, districts, et cetera, always have to have a reserve or some sort of reserve in place for what rainy day, like a rainy day issue, like a large capital project that comes up, something that's, you know, that's, that's sometimes the case. What you can't do easily is let's say overtax and then build a reserve, build, build an excessive reserve. You can't do that. So that, that, that's my knowledge from working previously with, let's say, village boards and things like that. So.
Right. And so we talked, we talked with some other candidates, I can't remember which one, about the actual breakdown of our taxes in Ridgewood and what percentage goes to our school district. Are you familiar with that breakdown?
I'm not exactly familiar with it right now, but I, but I can be in about, you know.
Yeah. Well, I think if, if my research has been thorough enough, it's 75% of our municipal budget goes to our schools. And then of course, we have fixed costs. Yeah, we have fixed costs at both the municipal level and at the board level for salaries and benefits. And the benefits piece kind of fluctuates every year because there might be new insurance plans that help out. So, you know, there's really not a lot of wiggle room, as I was going to say, that 75% of our municipal budget, of that 75%, I think the school board only manages about 15% because there's not a lot of wiggle room after, after the benefits and salaries and such. But I just want to jump back on.
By the way, I just want to say one thing about that though. I think a lot of people say what you just said, which is we don't have room to make any changes. We can't, we cannot be creative around the budget.
I'm not sure I said that. I'm positive I didn't say that, actually.
I wasn't trying to be rude or anything. I'm just trying to say that I do think that one can look at that budget and one can understand how best to utilize that budget and really make specific changes that will affect the school in a positive way. Okay. I, I do, and I also think that we have to think outside of the box about how to do some of the things that we already do, right? There's a lot of ways to do things. Like we came up with a way of improving insurance at the village level, which was, we were able to, what we did there was we, we ended up.
Who's we? Can you help me understand who we is?
My wife is the mayor of Tuxedo Park and so.
Oh, so it's not the village of Ridgewood. It's another municipality. Gotcha.
But she was that, but I wasn't, I wasn't, at the time, I was just, I was, let's say, helping her, advising her. But what she did there was she was able to change the insurance policy such that it was a high deductible policy and that the, a portion of the deductible, the deductible portion was actually paid for by the village. And it turned out to be an excellent way of really lowering the budget and actually the end result was very, very positive. I'm just saying that there's ways of looking at what we're currently doing that may be better. I just, all I'm saying, that's all I'm saying.
Gotcha. Okay. We have a couple of other questions that were brought in through our listeners. And one of the things is, you know, we talked about this, that there are things that are happening at the national level that are kind of making their way down to the local level. And one of those things you mentioned was DEI. You brought that up. And so then the other piece was book banning. And so we'd like to hear your thoughts on banning books who some people believe are not appropriate for certain age groups and such.
Well, definitely. There, there are a lot of books out there that are sexually explicit. And I've seen the books online per se, actual videos of these books by angry parents discussing the books, what the books show, what's the, the wordings in the books and what they're explaining. And they have cartoon diagrams of sexual behaviors that three, four, five, six, seven, eight, even, you know, high schoolers shouldn't even look at, by that way, it's that explicit. So if those books can be banned, in my opinion, that would be a great thing to do. Because what we want to focus on is the English, reading, math, history, social studies, the sciences and all that other stuff. Let, let a child grow up as I grew up and discovering, wow, you know, mom, dad, what about this and what about that? And that's where those things should be first taken care of within the families. And once again, getting back to parental rights, that the parents have the rights to say, I don't want my child to read these books. You want to keep them in the library? Okay, but not my child.
Yeah, for, for me, it's, I agree that, I do, I believe in freedom, freedom of speech. But, and I believe that books shouldn't be banned per se, but I do think that books should be age-appropriate. So, so for example, I don't think we should be showing some of, we should not be allowing some of the books that are currently in many libraries, libraries across the United States, school libraries, to be allowed to be seen by certain age children. That, that's, that's my view. It should be age-appropriate viewing, not banning, but age-appropriate viewing.
Okay. Can you help us understand this bracket that you're in? There's only one checkmark to check you on.
No, that's not true. That is not true.
Okay. Help me understand that.
That is not true. Each, each, so there are seven people running for the school board, seven, okay? Two of them are incumbents that are rerunning and five new people. Of the five new people, there are three of them that are on, on the, the row, on a row, right? And then there's one bracketed group that is Malcolm on the top row and me on the bottom row. So I'm by myself on the bottom row. A person can vote for the two of us. They can vote for one of us and somebody else. They can vote for any, anyone else and not us. If you vote for Malcolm, who's on top, and you don't, and then you vote for someone else, you didn't vote for me. you, you didn't vote for me.
So our listeners would like to know what this board has gotten wrong. Do you want to address that?
Uh, I'll let Malcolm take it first.
Yeah. But I think what the board has gotten wrong, as far as issues and things of that nature are concerned, I don't think they got anything wrong. Getting it done may be what they did wrong. Not getting it done efficiently or effectively, I believe, is the main reason. And the board also, I think, has gotten wrong, just like any, no, you got three terms, or I'm sorry, three years on the board. If you get a, another term of three years, I think that's great. That's awesome. But as we've been hearing across the board lately, in politics, they want term limits for, for certain offices, you know? Senator, you, you have it for, for president. You don't have it for the Supreme Court level or whatever. But term limits, I believe, is one thing the board has gotten wrong. One of the members has been sitting on a board, I believe, over 10 years. I guess that's great for her, but as far as limits and, and having new ideas come in is, I think that's where the board has gotten wrong. Maybe the people have gotten it wrong because for that, you know, I have nothing against that person whatsoever. However, that long on the board, I, I think you just need new members there that have fresh ideas that are ready to hit the pavement and run with it, with these, with goals that are going to be set in stone for years to come. Even if a person is there for three years, but yet you have something that established that is going to be ongoing, that's just going to produce nothing but the best percentages of grades for the kids and making sure that buildings and grounds are intact. That's, that's what we need. We need fresh information. We need fresh ideas. We need members who are ready, as Claude and I are, ready to get our hands dirty, ready to be for the community and to ask the community. This is what we're bringing forth to you. What do you think? And you have A, B, C, and D. Which one do you think will work well at your school? Now, everything may not work well with the same school. You have one high school. Okay. Hopefully that will work well, whatever it may be. But you have different middle schools and elementary schools and they all don't function the same. Not at all. You know, I, I was driving from Willard yesterday and near George Washington School and I believe Benjamin Franklin as well. None of those schools have traffic lights on those roads saying that, you know, hey, school is out or kids are in school, slow down your traffic, so forth and so on. None of those initiatives have been established. That's not there and you need that for safety. And a lot of current school board members, they speak about safety, but those things have not been established. They speak about safety and there are no, you know, post massacre of, of schools, you know, children in schools. Where's the security? There's no security there. So you need fresh board members like Claude and I to come and get those things established, showing, hey, the school board got it going on. We had the police coming by each school. They roll around here every 10 minutes, 10 minute cycles or something, walkarounds within the school, you know, police officers in or possibly armed security guards to ensure the safety of our students, you know, at, at every level from elementary up to high school. So we need fresh board members and not those to constantly sit in a chair over and over, listen to the, to the same messages and, and they just want to establish their goals and their ideas only. And okay, that's all well and good, but beyond, you know, six years of sitting there, I think it's time for, for some freshmen, even if Claude and I get in, I think six years should be enough, truthfully.
Claude, do you have, do you have anything to add to this?
Um, yeah. What I was going to say is that I, I, I do think that we, I've heard quite a few things from a lot of different people, the parents, about, you know, what could be better in the schools and what could be done. And, you know, just a whole range of things. Uh, one of the things I heard was, for example, that everyone is, in order for people's children to get their grades up, they're having to pay for a lot of tutoring, like a lot of tutoring out there, things like that. I, I, I will say, I, I do think that the role of the board is extremely important. And, and I, and I do think that it's our job to listen to what the community says are the major problems with the board, address them, uh, address those issues, identify solutions for those issues, rank those solutions and execute the best one.
All right. So our last question to both of you is.
Jeannie, can I just go back to that? Whenever we go to the HSA, I like to tell this story. My 16-year-old came to live with us. She graduated in 2004. Came to live with us from Georgia, where the school systems were not the best. Matter of fact, her, her grades were like Cs and Ds and maybe one F. She was not doing well at all. But when she came to Ridgewood High School before she graduated, those three years, is it? Yeah, those three years she came with you in the 10th grade, I believe. Those three years, her GPA just skyrocketed, all As. And I believe that's where the tradition of excellence was at its peak and now it has plummeted. So who's at fault there? Could it be the current board, board members?
I don't know what the evidence is that supports that, that the tradition of excellence has plummeted.
Well, I, I had seen online where it had said that Ridgewood High School math, math and reading has gone down. I would say about what, 20% or more. So.
I don't know. I haven't seen that research. That's a whole other set of issues that we can discuss. And for our timing today, I think that I just, I would like to ask each of you, what would you like the community to think about when they see your name on the ballot? Claude, do you want to take that one?
Uh, sure, sure. Um, uh, well, I guess, that's a good question, by the way. Someone who's fair, someone who is, has a lot of experience with financial, financial matters, somebody who works extremely well with people, has a lot of, will have a lot of decorum on the board and will also work very closely with the community and very closely with the superintendent to do this job.
Malcolm?
Yes. I'd like the community to know that myself and Claude, that we're leaders who want to service the community, you know, within the school districts at every level. And that we are so pro-student that we just want students not only to learn, but we want students to be happy. We want them to say, hey, I'm looking forward to going to school. And that's what I want them to see when they see my name and Claude's name there, that we are here to service the community, not to lord anything over them, but to service to them and to have that, and that we have that humility and we have that understanding that we are working for them.
Gotcha. All right. So the final comment is to let our listeners know how to contact you and how to learn more about you. Are you having any meet and greets? Do you have yard signs, website, so on and so?
We don't have yard signs right now. Um, we were, we were debating whether to have yard signs or whether just to have sort of more of a, you know, a face of social media presence, which we don't have a lot of right now. We do have a website, which is Jennings and Ginshard for RidgewoodBOE.com. And we will put on there our telephone numbers, but my telephone number is 713-501-8860. And my direct email address is claude.ginshard@gmail.com. And anyone can reach out to me at any time for any reason.
Indeed.
Thanks both for taking the time to be with us today and we wish you all the luck for the election. And like you mentioned at the top of the show, voting is happening right now. So you can send in your mail-in votes and you can go to the polls on Tuesday, November the 7th.
There's also early vote, early voting from the 28th of October to the 5th of November. So there's nine places in Bergen County where you can vote early. So you don't even have to go to your polling place on the 7th.
Thank you for that information.
Both of us, Jordan and Jeannie, and everyone out there listening on the podcast.
Sounds good. All right, you guys, take good care.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Welcome to Ridgewood Talks. Through this podcast, we will be introducing you to some of the leaders and legends in our village. We'll keep you updated about fascinating local events and we'll dig into the town's hot topics and so much more. But first, let me introduce myself. I'm Jeannie Johnson, the founder of Ridgewood Talks and Ridgewood Walks. The goal of these initiatives is to create a kinder, more connected and more vibrant community. I'm thrilled to be co-hosting this podcast with my good friend and all-around wonderful guy, Jordan Kaufman. We look forward to meeting with you weekly and hearing your thoughts on who and what you'd like to learn about in our beautiful hometown. Enjoy this episode.